Evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission of St. Lucie County, Thursday, August 18th. Everyone would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
Our pledge of allegiance truly apply to the United States of America, to the Republic in which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we come tonight as far as the commission, we ask for wisdom, direction in the decisions that are before us, moving on to county commissioners, we ask for wisdom in this. We pray for our county and all the many changes that it would be good for all of the residents. So, all of this, we need your help, and so we ask for that wisdom, and we pray it in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Sanders? Mr. Benner?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Odell?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Slay? Mr. Lowndes?
Excused.
Mr. Bridgers?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Slack?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Munt?
Yes, ma'am.
Vice Chair Low?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Taylor?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, I don't have any announcements or disclosures.
Oh, Mr. Chair.
Mr. O'Donnell.
We'd like everyone to know that Commissioner Kathy Townsend's husband, James, whom we know as Bud, is in ICU at Lawn Wood tonight. Please keep them in your prayers. Thank you.
Thank you for letting us know. All right, we'll move on to the minutes of the meeting of July 21st. Are there any additions or corrections? I'll take a motion.
Motion approved.
Motion is second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll move on to public comment. If there's any members of the public wishing to address the board on any non-agenda items. There are only two of you? Okay. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, public comment section, and we'll move on to public hearing 9A. 343 Trobridge Road rezone petition. And we have Mr. Chris with a presentation.
Good evening, Chair Taylor, members of the commission. For the record, my name is Chris McCrayne, Planner with the Planning and Development Services Department. Tonight, I'll be presenting Agenda Item 9A for a rezone petition for the property located at 343 Trobridge Road in Fort Pierce, and this is a quasi-judicial agenda item. In accordance with public notice requirements outlined in Section 11.00.03 of the St. Lucie County Land Development Code, public notice was advertised in the St. Lucie News Tribune on August 4th, 2022. Notices were mailed to 10 surrounding property owners located within 500 feet of the subject property, and a sign was posted on the property. The subject parcel is situated on the east side of Trobridge Road, approximately 300 feet south of Orange Avenue, as denoted in red on the map. The subject parcel is situated to the north, south, east, and west is designated by the mixed-use future land use designation. The subject parcel and the property situated to the north, south, east, and west are also designated by the mixed-use west, I'm sorry, West Orange mixed-use activity area, and pursuant to the comprehensive plan, all uses are restricted to uses that would be equivalent to the industrial, commercial, transportation utilities, or public facilities future land use designations. The subject parcel and the properties to the south are zoned agricultural one. Parcels to the north and east are zoned industrial light, and the properties to the west are zoned commercial general. The petition seeks to rezon the subject parcel from the agricultural one zoning district to the industrial light zoning district to allow for the storage of equipment associated with the business operations for South Florida land clearing, which is currently operating within the parcel to the north fronting on Orange Avenue. Mail notices were sent out to 10 property owners located within 500 feet of the subject parcel. The Planning and Development Services Department did receive a letter of objection signed by two property owners located within the 500-foot notification buffer, as indicated on the map by the red, the two red dots. And I apologize, there is a correction. It should be two not in favor, not one not in favor. This petition conforms to the standards of review set forth in the St. Lucie County Land Development Code, Section 11.06.03, and is consistent with the St. Lucie County Comprehensive Plan goals, objectives, and policies. Staff therefore recommends petition be forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners with a recommendation of approval. This concludes staff's presentation, and the applicant's agent and staff is available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chris. Just a couple of things I wanted to point out while we were reviewing this. The, I know we all got the letter, and there was a couple of things about the secondary access on the back property, and that's not part of this, that won't be happening. It'll still be the main entrance that they're using. And another thing I thought was interesting, we looked back on Google Earth to an aerial of this property in 2011, and it looked almost exactly the same. So, this activity has been going on for quite a while, so there's not going to be a huge change in traffic or noise or anything that'll be changing. And then the other point was, I initially asked, you know, is this the way for them to get out of the code enforcement lien that's on, on the property? But this is actually a better way of working with them, and it's not removing the code enforcement violation whatsoever. It's actually making it a little bit worse on them, because they're going to have to make some changes on the property, some to come up to code. So, I just wanted to point, point that out while everybody's reviewing this.
That's correct. Yeah, so, just to add on to that, the rezone would allow for the use, which is currently in operation. The site to the north is acting as their, their office operation, and then they're storing their vehicles for their operation onsite as well. Through a zoning compliance review, we would have to review stormwater, parking and vehicular use areas, landscaping, and site access, as you mentioned, Chair, would remain as one single site access. We would ask them to either combine the subject parcels via unity of title or provide a cross-access easement for that south parcel.
Are there any questions of staff?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. O'Donnell?
I'm a little bit familiar with Trobridge Road. Is this where a mobile home is located?
So, the, the mobile home is on this subject parcel. That is part of
That's what I thought.
That is part of the code violation. The code violation, which was, which started in February of 2021, was for the storage of vehicles, which is not allowed in the AG1 zoning district, and for the unpermitted mobile home slash modular home structure. So, those, those items would be reviewed under the zoning compliance. Under the industrial light zoning district, it does allow for a detached, single-family dwelling to act as a security quarters, though upon rezoned, that structure would not be a, it wouldn't be a non-conforming. Or, I should state it, it would be a conforming structure to the zoning district.
Now, I have another question here, because I've had a similar situation with 40 years of business experience here with with ag and industrial property. This seems like it would be a better fit for a unity of title. Have you explored that option?
So, that would be the first recommendation from staff, but it would be up to the property owner if they want to do a unity of title or provide a cross-access easement.
But it seems like that would be a little bit more appropriate, you know, than changing the zoning. They would just simply incorporate this into the other properties.
Well, the zoning would still be, it would still require to meet zoning code, and currently, the agricultural zoning district doesn't allow for the storage of vehicles. So, even if they combined the vehicles, the properties, there would still be the underlying zoning of that parcel, which still wouldn't allow for the use.
Okay, so, they are considering the unity of title then? Or it should be, regardless of the zoning change?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
So, if, if this is approved, they would have to bring everything up to date and take care of the code enforcement?
That's correct. So, the code, coded case is still open at this time, and they would have to satisfy those, those requirements in order to close out that code case.
Before it would be rezoned, even if we approve it?
Even if we approve it. That's correct.
So, the, Chair?
So, on the concern of the letter opposing, the concern number five, the precedent, which, and this particular response is to change the rules so they can avoid the pending violation and fines. So, what you're saying is, is that will be required to be taken care, care of in the process?
That's correct. So, regardless of the rezone, I mean, they would, they would have to satisfy the code, code case.
Thank you.
That's still pending at this time, and would be after the rezone is approved, if it was.
It's just kind of a change in requirements of what coming into compliance will look like.
It would allow them to come into compliance easier, because the industrialized zoning district would allow for the storage of the vehicles, and it would also allow for the, the permitting of the, the mobile home slash modular home unit.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
One other question. Is there a fine pending right now?
So, they, it has been open since 2021, and there are fines being incurred on the property.
And how much are they, what's the fines today?
I do not have that figure in front of me, actually.
I think it was like 5,200 is what I saw.
I think when we were in the meeting, that was familiar.
I'll write that down, but roughly.
Mr. Chair. In the summary on item E, it said, "Site-specific impacts will be addressed through a development application." Can you amplify on that? I mean, do we know what the site-specific problems might be that are going to be addressed, or, you know, is there some knowledge that we need to have in helping to make our decision? Or you don't know what might come up?
Are you referring to the staff report? Yes, sir. Okay. So, the certain site improvements that would be required would be the stormwater, landscaping, paving of vehicular use areas, such as this, where these vehicles are stored and where they're traversing. The code does require that any vehicle must be stored on a paved surface. So, through the site development permit and building permit process, we can review those items.
Have you already had those discussions with the applicant?
Those discussions have been going, ongoing through this process.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of staff or the applicant? All right, seeing none. This is a public hearing. If there's any members of the public that wish to address the board on this item, please come forward.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. For the record, Todd Murray with Redtail representing the applicant, and really would like to just sort of support staff's presentation. Want to make sure we're sort of abundantly clear with what's going on, because I hear there are discussions obviously about the code enforcement case, as well as discussions about the rezoning. So, I want to really start with what we're really focused on, and that is the rezoning of the land. If you look at the staff report and look at the map that Chris has, if we go with that map, what you really want to look at here is the fact that when we deal with rezonings, what I often like to talk about, what we call the three Cs. And those three Cs are consistency, compatibility, and capability. And when we go through that process, we want to look at whether or not those three Cs are able to be met whenever you do any rezoning. So, forget the code enforcement case completely, just thinking about it from a consistency standpoint. When we begin to look at the comprehensive plan, look at the comprehensive plan map, you begin to see that everything to the east side is already zoned light industrial. Everything to the north, which is the sub, subject's current operation, is zoned light industrial. And then to the west, there where Carter's is, is zoned commercial general. To the south is the remaining portion, that's AG1. So, their piece has really kind of been, you know, an anomaly that stuck in that area. So, it really, regardless of the code enforcement case, you can see where, from a consistency standpoint, we can see where that line should be drawn and pulled into that. You don't want to get pulled into spot zoning scenarios. We then begin to talk about compatibility, and when you look at the neighborhood, you can see again how it's compatible to see this type of, of rezoning occur for this particular parcel. And then the last is capability. Can this particular subject site, is it capable of handling the uses that are allowed currently under your light industrial zoning district? And again, it's clear that this site is actually suitable and capable of handling those elements. And that's one of the things I want to make sure we're sort of clear, because we can get caught in those two mindsets of, are we dealing with code enforcement? Are we dealing with rezoning? So, clearly, rezoning, we're able to deal with it from that standpoint. On the code enforcement side, whether we're dealing with the unity of title, as Mr. Odell discussed, or whether we're dealing with a cross-access easement, all those things will come into play. But currently, with their existing mobile home office, they cannot operate their use at all from that site, even with a unity of title, even with a cross-access easement. They cannot operate and, without removing the code enforcement violation. Through the rezoning, they are then able to take and do either unity of title or a cross-access easement, and have both parcels work in harmony. And so, South Florida land clearing would be able to utilize both of those sites, which they've been using for years, in a compliant manner. And that's really what staff has been working towards, is compliance, and this is one part of the process. If there are other questions that I can answer, be glad to help answer those for you, but again, thank you very much for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Are there any questions from the applicant? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's any other members of the public that wish to address the board on this item, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back for further discussion and a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
I'll make a motion to approve for discussion.
Okay. Second?
The item that bothers me a little bit tonight is that we got a, a letter from the next-door neighbor with some concern, and those were, I guess the well water was of a major concern from the possibility of toxic chemicals getting down into the aquifer. And I had some questions for the objector about having had their well tested, what the results were, mitigation possibilities. I'm not sure how close public water might be, or what the expense might be to do that. So, he's missed the opportunity to answer those questions that I had, which I find disappointing. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Mr. McCrayne. In a prior, a prior slide, you showed the West Orange mixed-use zone. So, when we look at the specific use, commercial-industrial, I, I think in the lower left-hand rectangle there, that includes not only the subject property, but also all of those ag-one properties around it. Is that correct?
That is correct. I'm not sure exactly how far south. I want to say, looking at this, this purple area or pink area, that is the extent that matches up with
Those, those are all the ag-one spots, including the two properties owned by the authors of the, the letter that was sent.
That is correct.
Okay. And with the rezoning and bringing the property into compliance, we would be paving under the vehicles that are potentially leaking? And we would contain the stormwater on the site?
That is correct, and I'm not aware of any vehicles that are leaking. I think that was a concern of the applicant, or the adjacent property owner. But the code does require that all vehicles, if it has a motor, has to be stored on a paved surface.
And would be, there be some sort of oil interceptor in the drainage system before the stormwater entered a ride detention area?
Yeah, so there would be stormwater and filtration systems through the stormwater that would catch, capture any impediments, and then out to the, the master stormwater system for the county.
Okay, and where does the primary Orange Avenue streetfront, where does that parcel exit and enter?
I'm going to go to a backup slide here. So, as you can see on this slide where the number 335 is there, that is the current site access for both of these parcels. They are both owned and operated by South Florida Land Clearing. So, this is the discussion about a unity of title or the cross-access easement.
Okay.
But we would not be permitting an additional access point.
It looks like somehow the, the vehicle turning radius onto that street is not adequate. You can see the, the trails of vehicles going off the road and into the adjacent shoulder. Is there something that will be addressed to help alleviate that situation when they bring the property into compliance?
So, the driveway and onsite improvements will be reviewed through the Public Works' site development permit, and they can tackle that, that concern at the site development permit to make sure that there's adequate turning radius for vehicles.
Okay. And will a traffic study be required, or just a statement?
Probably just a statement, because of the, I don't believe that this would trip the requirement for a full traffic study.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any further discussion? We have a, a motion on the table. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Benner?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Odell?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Slay?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Bridgers?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Slack?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Munt?
Yes, ma'am.
Vice Chair Low?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Taylor?
Yes, ma'am. Motion carries unanimously. Move on to item 9B. We have a County Initiated Land Development Code text amendment eliminating provisions for Class A mobile homes. We have the illustrious Maite Santa Maria presenting.
I like that intro. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Maite Santa Maria, Planning and Development Services Director. For the record, as noted, tonight I will be presenting Agenda Item 9B pertaining to a Land Development Code amendment for the Class A mobile home process. This item was publicly noticed as required by the Land Development Code on August 4th. And the purpose of this amendment is to delete the Class A mobile home permit process and eliminate the references to Class A mobile homes throughout the Land Development, excuse me, Land Development Code, and ensure a consistent review procedure in the code for both single-family dwelling units and mobile homes or manufactured homes. This amendment is important to ensure that our county's Land Development Code remains consistent with the Florida statutes, which provide that local requirements and regulations for manufactured homes be reasonable, uniformly applied, and enforced without distinction as to whether such housing, housing is manufactured or built in a conventional manner. And this is specifically required by Sections 320.8285, Pren six, and Section 553.38 of the Florida statutes. Additionally, the proposed change ensures that the code reflects the recent change in Section 163.3202 Florida statutes, which prohibits the application of land development regulations relating to building design elements on single-family and two-family dwellings. This includes the external building color, the type or style of exterior cladding material, the style or material of roof structures or porches, the exterior non-structural architectural ornamentation, the location or architectural styling of windows or doors, the location or orientation of garages, the number and the types of rooms, and the interior layout of rooms. So, that is a new statute provision that prohibits us from reviewing those items. So, this is an excerpt of the proposed amendment. It is the most prominent part of it, which shows the deletion of the Class A mobile home permit code section. And the current section that's in our code today, so this 110502, which is on the screen, establishes design element criteria, for example, the exterior finish of the roof and the walls, and the skirting of a mobile home, which we utilize, and review those elements to define a mobile home as a detached, single-family unit. But again, with that statutory change that occurred last year, the Florida Legislature amended Section 163.3202, which prohibits the application of those land development regulations relating to building design elements. This new statute section became effective on July 1st, 2021. It limits the county's ability to regulate such items as roofing materials and exterior finish of a dwelling unit, except in very limited circumstances. So, that is for like a designated historic structure, a unit which is in a community redevelopment area, or CRA, or for a dwelling unit that's located in a planned unit development, or a PUD. As a side note here, for existing approvals that are in a PUD, or CRA, or anything else that has a private covenant, or deed restriction, or other contractual agreement within that property, this does not invalidate that, so if there are existing design criterias that are there, those would continue to exist. But with this new statute, if a local government can no longer regulate building design elements of a single-family or two-family dwelling unit, then we should no longer regulate those same building elements on a mobile home, particularly when we're using them to define it as a single-family detached dwelling. To continue to do so would create a disparate treatment of mobile homes based solely on the manufactured home type, which again, is prohibited. Continuing on with the proposed amendments, these are the other pieces that are significant within the ordinance. You can see that the amendment deletes the term "Class A mobile home" and incorporates the term, both terms, "mobile home" and "manufactured home", into the definition of a detached, single-family dwelling. This again, is to be consistent with Sections 380.8285, Pren six, and Section 553.38 of the Florida statute, which both specify that local requirements must be reasonable and uniformly applied and enforced without any distinction as to whether a building is conventionally constructed or manufactured. It should be noted that the Florida Attorney General has issued several opinions stating that the land use and zoning requirements must not discriminate against manufactured housing, and that local governments cannot exclude manufactured housing from a zoning classification that allows a conventionally-built home. So, if you can build a single-family, stick, concrete, whatever home, you should be allowed to have a manufactured home, and you could not exclude it. These opinions, the Attorney General opinions, further state that local requirements and regulations relating to the construction and use of residential buildings or structures must be again, uniformly applied and enforced, so as not to discriminate against or exclude factory-built housing from the local community, and must be without distinction as to whether residential houses are factory-built or built in a conventional manner. Continuing on with the proposed amendment, these are further amendments to the definition section. There are updates to the definition of manufactured home, as you can see on the screen, and this is to be consistent with Section 320.01, Pren B, as well as the residential addition of the Florida Building Code, and it references the relevant certification of a mobile home. Additionally, there's updates, excuse me, the relevant certification of a manufactured home. And then additionally, you can see there are changes to the mobile home definition, and this is to be consistent with Sections 320.823 and Section 553.36. and Section 553.36/14 of Florida statutes, again referencing the relevant certification process for a manufactured unit. So the amendments included within the proposed ordinance will provide for consistency with Florida statutes, which we must do, and establish the same requirements for conventionally-built homes and manufactured or mobile homes, which again is required by Sections 320.8285/6, Section 553.38, and Section 163.3202. Staff finds that this petition meets the standards of review set out in Section 11.0603 of the St. Lucy County Land Development Code and is not in conflict with the goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan. And staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission forward this petition to the Board of County Commissioners with a recommendation of approval. And just before I turn it over, I did want to note that I reached out to both the city of Fort Pierce and Port St. Lucie to ask them how they are handling the new statutory changes that have come to play that are causing these changes. Fort Pierce responded that they are evaluating their land development code today to see if they need to make any changes. Unfortunately, I did not receive any responses to the outreach that I did to the city of Port St. Lucie. Further, the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, just in July, it published updates to its manufactured home standards. So the HUD updated proposed rules, which were published in the Federal Register on July 19th, 2022. And the proposed revisions cover items such as construction and safety standards and installation standards for manufactured homes. I'm not, you know, super knowledgeable on the building code, but I did have Mr. Doug Harvey, our building official, review the proposed rule. And he noted that the federal codes are now beginning to reflect and mirror the requirements in the Florida Building Code, so they'll be more resilient and a little stronger and safer in those units. And then lastly, I did want to note that within your agenda packet, there is a memo from Mr. Dan McIntyre, our county attorney, which goes over the same material and is consistent with the information that has been presented tonight. And again, with that, we are recommending, we are hoping you recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you, Maite. Is there any questions? Mr. Low?
Quick question. Just sort of a difficult issue in my mind. What would happen if we wouldn't approve this? The next choice to me would be, it would go back to the county evidently. Can you overrule us?
So we wouldn't overrule you. We would present your recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. There would be two hearings before the board, and they would ultimately decide if they were going to adopt the amendment or not.
Let's say that they didn't approve it. And then a guy comes before them with a, want to put a mobile home on this lot that there's no deed restrictions or anything next to a guy with an $800,000 house. Would he come back to, if there is a Board of Adjustment? Or would he, would he go back then to the state and want to sue and possibly win under the laws that you're telling us are going to be in effect?
So I'm going to try to answer that. So assuming it was not approved, that would mean the existing mobile home Class A permit process would still be within our land development code, and we would be processing it through that. We do have some current applications that have been in-house that we are currently processing. But the individual, whoever that applicant is, could potentially sue the county saying that we are not meeting Florida statutes and that we are in violation of that. I can't tell you the outcome of that litigation. It could be a lengthy process, but we should be consistent with the Florida statutes. And part of the answer is market, the market will dictate where homes will go. Likely, if there's an $800,000 home, it's an expensive property, you're likely not buying that property next door to build a mobile, to place a mobile home. But again, you know, depends on the means of that individual.
Any other questions for staff? Mr. Slay?
As it stands presently, can a mobile home be placed anywhere?
They cannot be placed anywhere in the current Class A mobile home process. Give me one second and I will get to that. So within the current process within Section 110502, there is a procedure to review Class A mobile homes for properties zoned within the AG5 and AG2.5 zoning districts, as well as there is a procedure to review them within the AG1, AR1, RC, RE1, RE2, RS2, RS3, 4, RM5, RM7, 9, 11, and 15. So most of the categories, but not each and every one of them.
And that's as a conditional use or as a use by right?
So this would be a process where it goes to the Board of County Commissioners today, assuming that there's an objection for the ag ones or the residential ones go directly to the board, where they review the building design elements to classify the class, the mobile home as a single-family. That is the problematic issue, is that we can no longer review those building design elements. Because we look at the roofing, the material, the skirting and so forth and saying, it looks like a house, so we can approve it, but we can no longer look at those details.
But it would still have to comply with the Florida Building Code in its entirety.
So the Florida Building Code does not regulate manufactured homes or mobile homes. They are certified by HUD, and the HUD standards are being updated by the federal government. They do have to meet Florida Building Code in terms of flood elevation, but there's no other building code standards for manufactured or mobile homes.
So who reviews the permit documents?
We review them, but it's for like the electrical and utility connections, the elevation, the height and things like that. Setbacks, parking, but we don't review the unit itself. That is certified by either the state or the federal government, and it's very specific in Florida statute that if they have that seal, they are deemed to meet local codes.
But those documentations, the drawings or the review process is for the unit itself. What about the foundation upon which it sits? Tie-downs and all of that?
We do review the foundation. So like the foundation, the elevation, the utility connections, but anything in the unit. So in the manufactured home, within the four, you know, within that boundary, we do review. That is longstanding state statute and federal code.
And that's also true for manufactured homes?
Yes, ma'am.
And what about the hybrid buildings that we're seeing today where there's a partially field-built, conventional-style base floor? And then often a pre-manufactured, panelized component? Manufactured home, basically, the upper half of the building may very well be manufactured. Where does that one land?
I don't know exactly where the transition lies. But any of the provisions that have to meet the Florida Building Code would be reviewed. Anything that is outside of our scope, it would have to have that seal to show that it is appropriate and can be approved.
I foresee issues. And that is because we're seeing, in general, in the building construction industry, we're seeing a move toward more factory-built components, more panelized buildings. And it's really going to become important in more affordable housing. So somewhere, we're going to have to sort out what's manufactured and what is, you know, I don't know where the line happens, but we need to be able to review that and make sure that they are safe because we don't want these buildings coming apart because HUD didn't plan for a Cat 5 hurricane and we've got half the houses in the county blown out west. So who will be responsible for sorting that out?
So the federal government will be certifying those manufactured homes that are mobile homes, and DBPR, Department of Business and Regulation, will be reviewing the manufactured units that have the state seals. We would be reviewing anything that it attaches to in terms of foundation or anything else, but not the units themselves. We, our building official is involved in a lot of review committees and has participated in comments and stuff to try to make those units stronger, safer, everything else. But we don't have the ability to regulate those units.
Okay.
That is lobbying your state and federal government for changes.
Okay, yeah, I think as we move toward mass timber and pre-manufactured and 3D-printed buildings, we're going to have issues.
All sorts of new technology, not just the manufactured homes, but all the new technology would have to be evaluated to see, can it meet building code, wind codes, everything else.
Yeah, the definition of what is manufactured versus what is conventional is really going to have to be very carefully studied.
Mr. Chairman. Santa Maria, you said that you reached out to the city, Fort Pierce and Port St. Lucie. Did you think about either Martin or Indian River Counties and see whether they'd made adoptions yet?
I did not, but I will make a point to reach out to them before this moves forward.
Just out of curiosity. It's nice that it's Port St. Lucie and it's the city, but it's not a county, whereas Indian River and Martin are. And their BOCC may have acted.
Thank you, I will do that.
As I thought, I read this, that in the Sections 11, let's just say, just say 7, oh, I'm sorry, Section 11 of the Land Development Code, if this is adopted, it would eliminate 11.00.03, which is the requirement for notice, 11.004, and 11.05.02, which is the application for a permit for a Class A mobile home as a detached, single-family dwelling unit. So is that fact? I mean, those sections of the Land Development Code would actually come out and they would no longer appear?
So on section, let's say, for example, 11.00.03 notice, the entire section stays, except where the clause comes in, Class A mobile home, that little clause is deleted. The rest of the notice section remains as is. And that's the same for the other code sections that you noted, except for Section 110502, which is the actual Class A mobile home permit process. That code section would be deleted in its entirety.
Okay. I had a question about some of the, if somebody were to be denied, the appeal process is being adjusted as well, is that correct? I thought at one time that they could have appealed to the Board of Adjustment.
I'm just double-checking. Doesn't appear to affect any appeal process.
Okay. Are we going to continue to have a Board of Adjustment?
We are proposing code amendments, and that will be coming to you in the near future, where the Board of Adjustment, the recommendation is for the Board of Adjustment to be served by a special magistrate.
So what happens, all right.
It would have the same functions. It would just be instead of a five-member board.
Would you have public hearings like we have with the Board of Adjustment now?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair.
There's nothing in this statute about the size of a mobile home that would be there or could be there. Is it all Class A or no Class A anymore? Could a guy have a 10-foot mobile home or 100-foot?
So there won't be a Class A. That's actually just a term that's within the St. Lucy County Land Development Code. It's not a term of art, it's not referenced in any statute or federal code or anything else. But you can see within the screen before you right now, our current definition of mobile home is a structure which is eight feet, eight by eight feet, 2.4 meters or more in width, or over 35 feet in length. And that matches state statute in terms of the minimum requirements.
And that would be in this proposal?
That is existing text that is in the Land Development Code today, which we are not altering.
Thank you.
Mr. Benner?
Thank you, Chair. Just a quick comment. So with HUD on manufactured homes, they have wind rating 1, 2, and 3, right? So wind rating 1 for winds up to 70, wind rating 2 gets you up to 100, and then wind rating 3 gets you to 110, that's the highest they go. There's a map in Florida that says what wind rating you're at. So if you're like on the coast, basically it's wind rating 3. If you have a HUD label, it has to be certified for wind level 3. You can't put a HUD wind 1 in a wind 3 zone. So basically, you're not going to get 150 mile an hour manufactured home with a HUD label. They only go up to 110, which is a Cat 2. So there's, basically, you're just trusting that. And that's their map. They have a nationwide map for that, so that's as strong as they get. Some modulators might be, I mean, I've heard modular being 150, 160, but actual HUD labeled manufactured homes, you're going off of that now. It's just that you can't put anything additional in it.
Absolutely, and a modular home does have to meet Florida Building Code and the wind ratings for that location. Again, the manufactured homes are just certified by HUD and follow the HUD rules, and we are not allowed to alter that.
If the HUD rating is only 110, are we allowing them to be placed in?
So Florida statute says if they have that seal, they are certified to meet local area codes, and we are not allowed to change or enforce or add anything additional.
Basically, Nettles Island's good up to like 110. That's the highest they go, or you have to go by HUD.
Put out signs, no 130 mile an hour hurricanes allowed.
That's why you can get them for like a hundred grand.
Why would a building that's only rated for 110 miles an hour in a place that's known to have 160? You know, that doesn't make any sense at all.
Okay, do we have any other further questions?
I do have a question. Yeah, I, between a manufactured home, I live in Spanish Lakes. Okay, I'm from Kentucky, so if it came in on wheels, it's a trailer. They don't like to say that out there, and it's not a porch, it's a lanai. I'm not sure what that is, but...
A fancy porch.
Yes. But anyway, I called, I'm going to replace a roof on my place out there. And when I called the building department, they say that the code for a roof, a permit is not required because of the state law supersedes the local, correct?
That is correct. So we don't permit the manufactured home or its components, only the, you know, like the connections to utilities, the foundation and the like, but anything on that unit, we do not permit.
Okay.
One other question. So we have an energy code. How does the HUD-approved housing meet energy codes? Is there a review of that as part of their system? Or are we just inviting energy inefficient buildings into our area?
I cannot speak to the HUD standards for their construction and safety. I'm not familiar enough for, I don't have that expertise in terms of how to read those codes, but it would be whatever HUD approves, and it likely doesn't meet the Florida Building Code energy requirements.
Mr. Chair, my final comment is, I don't want the county to take on either the state or the federal government. It's just, that's a no-win situation. I'll approve with that caveat.
Any other questions of staff? Okay, this is a public hearing. If any, anyone here would like to come speak about this, please come forward. Say no to close the public hearing and bring it back for a discussion or a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Odell?
I moved the proposed text amendment to the Land Development Code be forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners with a recommendation of approval.
Second by Commissioner Benner?
Second.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Benner?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Odell?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Slay?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Bridges?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Slack?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Mott?
Yes, ma'am.
Vice Chair Low?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Taylor?
Yes, ma'am. Motion carries, thank you, Maite. That concludes this evening's agenda. If there's any other announcements or anything, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
We got anything on for next month planned?
We do have it planned. We don't have the final agenda yet, but we do anticipate another meeting. We do have it planned. We don't have the final agenda yet, but we do anticipate another meeting.
We are adjourned.